All right, good evening. I am Mayor Jen Wallison and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council's April 8th Special City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in the city council chambers. Please note that we may limit public comment speaker time depending on the number of speakers for each item. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor, city council members Drew Combs, Maria Dorr, and Betsy Nash. Staff present includes city manager Justin Murphy, city attorney Nira Doherty, and city clerk Judy Heron. City clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Wallison, and again echoing a welcome to our special April 18th city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on any of tonight's agenda items, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment on the item you wish to speak, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. And that concludes my introductions. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, city clerk Heron. So tonight we have item C, which is our special business item, and we also have C, excuse me, we also have D, our closed session items. I know that there are members of the public who are likely here to comment on D, our closed session. Unfortunately, our planning commission interviews are timed scheduled, so we're going to have to commence, normally if there's a lot of people for one item, I would love to bring that up first. But given the time, appointments of the planning commission interviews, we're going to have to proceed with the agenda as advertised. And so with that, we are going to move on to our special business this evening, which is C1, our interviews of planning commission applicants. No action will be taken at this meeting. Appointments are scheduled for the April 25th city council meeting. City clerk Heron, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item C1, interviews of planning commission applicants, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature or press star nine if you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone. This will be the final call for public comment on item C1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, city clerk Heron. Okay, so now we are going to move on to our planning commission interviews. And city clerk Heron, can you please now provide us instructions on how this interview process will proceed?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, I would like to note that Mia Levitin and Juan Man Lee have withdrawn their applications from the planning commission. Also Stuart Safer had a conflict this evening and is unable to participate in the interviews, but would still like to be considered for appointment. The city council is encouraged to connect with Stuart if you have any questions for him. And at this time, I'll be inviting our planning commission applicants up one at a time. For those participating virtually, I'll promote you to panelist so you can engage your webcam and microphone. For those participating in person, I will ask that you have a seat at this table to my right, and you can engage the microphone by pressing the red button. And the city council will then have the opportunity to interview each applicant. Interviews are anticipated to take approximately six or 10 minutes per applicant. And our first planning commission applicant will be Paul Stedemeister.
Excuse me, city clerk Heron?
Yes.
Can you please repeat the names of the applicants who have withdrawn their applications for us?
Yes, it's Mia Levitin and Juan Man Lee.
Thank you. And prior to commencing with the interviews, this is a special meeting of the city council. During special meetings of the city council, we do not take general public comment. During our regular business meetings, at the beginning, we do open it up for folks to come and discuss anything that they would like to. But I want to just let the public know, if you're here to make a general public comment on an item that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to return next week, April 25th, for our next regularly scheduled city council meeting. You can also always send an email to thecitycouncil@city.council@menlopark.gov. So thank you, city clerk Heron, and we can proceed with the interviewing.
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. So our first applicant will be Paul Stedemeister. And again, Paul, I believe you're participating in person. You can come right up here to this table and engage that microphone at the desk.
City clerk Heron, should the council proceed?
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Stedemeister. Thank you for joining us this evening. We are going to go through a series of questions. As the mayor, I'm going to take the liberty of asking all of the questions, but you can address all council members with your responses. And then if any council members have any follow-up or clarifying questions, they can jump in. And then at the end, if there's anything you want to add, please feel free. So our first question, sir, is please describe why you want to serve on the planning commission and what you hope to accomplish as a member.
Yes, I'd like to join because I'm a long-term resident in Menlo Park over 20 years, living in Sharon Heights. And I would like to continue to have Menlo Park be a very vibrant and exciting place to live and work and have a balance of commercial, industrial, and residential properties. And as well as to continue to foster and maintain the green areas, the parks for their intended use. And hopefully with my experience in engineering, geology, and environmental compliance and health and safety, I can hopefully provide a good guidance to the city.
Thank you. How do you intend to balance the interests of project applicants and other members of the community?
But yes, essentially being very polite and straightforward and open. And address the concerns as well as the applicant's point of view or perspective. And explain that sometimes it's a balancing act and you have to compromise in some cases. But in any event, the important thing is to maintain within the policy of the city. Try to maintain, stay within the boundaries of the policies that the city has, as well as environmental and the various codes, city codes, as well as codes outside the city.
And what major issues do you foresee the planning commission dealing with? And what would be the planning commission's role in dealing with these issues?
Well, the issues are the increasing cost of living here in Menlo Park, as well as throughout the Bay Area. There's increasing demand for city services, as well as increasing demand for use of city, what I would just basically call city right away, the streets, the sidewalks. You have more and more demand for the uses by both commercial interest as well as residences and increasing traffic in the streets. Also, a very important thing is keeping keeping within budget and balancing the budget and minimizing the pressures to increase increased taxation and costs. And again, to maintain the greenery and the parks and just the beauty of Menlo Park.
What is your understanding of the downtown specific plan? And what are your ideas about how the implementation of it can be a success?
I'm sorry, but I'm very limited in terms of my understanding of the downtown. I know they've made some changes downtown. They used to have, well, for just a minor example, they used to have dumpsters there in the back parking lots years ago. They're being exploited by, you know, people throwing things, so that's not longer there, which is good. There is, there's been encroachment onto the streets by homeless people who are using, who began using the streets and the sidewalks, but at the same time, some of the commercial interests that have storefronts have also encroached onto the streets and sidewalks, so. But overall, it seems, it seems to be that the policy seems to be positive more than negative.
Thank you. Do you have any personal experience with the planning commission discretionary review process or building permit process in Menlo Park or another community?
For the last 10 years, I've been with the president, I've been president of a homeowners community association here in Sharon Heights in Pilipinas. 120-unit condominium complex. And so I've been, as president, have had to deal with permit applications for renovation, reconstruction, sewer repairs. And typically that also involves getting permits or securing permits from the city when needed.
What experience do you have working in a group setting? And indicate what sort of framework was used to ensure efficient and effective meetings?
The important thing with the meetings is to to have participation of the stakeholders, the important people who are leading the meetings so that they participate. And to have an orderly procedures for running the meetings. And to remain polite and as, you know, as well as can be done. And invite participation by the community and visitors to the meeting.
What is your understanding of the time commitment that is necessary in order to be well-prepared for planning commission meetings?
Well, there's going to be some time that has to be used or prepared for the meetings, specifically understand the issues that are going to be brought up at the meeting and understand the background. And for that, you need to be, you need to have a person that's well-organized and keeps track of the various documents and various memo, memorandums, and so forth regarding the meeting.
This is very specific, but do you or your spouse have the business interest or other potential conflict of interest in the city other than your personal residence?
No, no. I've never worked for the city of Menlo Park.
Thank you. And my last question is, what is your understanding of recent state housing laws and how they relate to local jurisdictions?
Yeah, the recent housing laws that are coming from Sacramento, yeah, they are, they are mandating for the cities to provide a certain percentage of low-cost housing. And this is placing a burden on some cities because of the lack of space and because of conflicts in the existing zoning of residential zoning, as well as generating some conflict among the residents that are not strong advocates of such regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Stedemeister. I'd like to see if any of my colleagues have any follow-up questions. Mr. Stedemeister, is there anything else you'd like to share with us so that you'd like us to know in consideration of your application? Or any questions that you have for us?
No, I don't. I'm fine.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you for your interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So our next applicant will be Andrew Erich. If you'd like, you can come right up to the table, and it looks like the mic is hot, so you should be all set. And Mayor Wallison, you may continue with the interviews.
Good evening, Mr. Erich. Thank you for coming. As I explained to our last applicant, I'm going to go ahead and read all the questions, but you can address all of us and they'll ask any follow-up. And then at the end, you can add anything you'd like. So please describe why you want to serve on the planning commission and what you hope to accomplish as a member.
First of all, good evening, Mayor Wallison, members of the city council. Thank you for your time. My reasons range from the micro to the macro. At a micro level, I have two young kids aged four and two, and thinking about their future in Menlo Park is important. Also, at a personal level, city issues, urban issues have been important to me. I received a graduate degree in urban planning and worked on the city staff of San Jose. So these issues are close to me. At a macro level, you mentioned in your questions to the last applicant about statewide legislation. I think it's an exciting time to be thinking about these issues. I think statewide legislation provide both opportunities and challenges. And I'm excited about working on how we can make those work for and benefit Menlo Park.
How do you intend, excuse me, how do you intend to balance the interests of project applicants and other members of the community?
Yeah, it's a great question. First of all, the planning commission is not a policymaking body, so I think there are some prioritization decisions and balanced decisions that are for the council to make. And as a former city staff member, I'm aware of how this works and that the planning commission really is an implementation body. And so first and foremost, it's about adherence to city code and city law because it's up to the council to make a lot of prioritization decisions. But there's always judgment calls involved, and I think it's important to be fair and to explain the rationale to folks who are applying. This is a very personal thing for lots of folks who come before the planning commission. It's about their home, it's about their neighborhood. And so as much as it is about balancing prioritization and balancing priorities, I think it's also about explaining in a clear way how we're seeing things.
What major issues do you foresee the planning commission dealing with? And what would the commission's role be in dealing with these issues?
Yeah, I think I mentioned already, but new state legislation about how much, you know, I think it's great that the state is thinking of this as a statewide issue and that all communities all around the state need to contribute to this. Need to contribute to the amount of housing that the state needs. And I'm excited to think about how that applies to Menlo Park, so I think that's going to be a big one. I'm also excited to engage in some of the large developments that are going to be understudied, the park line, or sorry, the SRI development, first and foremost, I think is going to be important. But I also think that it's important that the planning commission and that the city not overly focus on large developments at the expense of individual decisions. Because as I said, people come before the commission with their homes, and I think there's also statewide legislation about ADUs and making those easier to build. So I think all of those issues will be important, and it'll be important to look to the city council and give feedback to the city council on where more guidance is needed.
What is your understanding of the downtown specific plan? And what are your ideas about how the implementation can be a success?
My understanding is the downtown plan is about creating a vibrant downtown and also a just one that reflects the needs of the entire Menlo Park community. I'm really excited about specific development ideas and development plans in the city to make downtown more accessible to the entire city. I think the potential bike bridge under El Camino and the new development there is really exciting. I think the park line development and the transit opportunities to make it easier for folks from around the city to get to downtown are really important, so. I think the downtown plan is great, but it relies on making sure that people can get to downtown in different ways. Cars, transit, bikes, pedestrian. And so I would be interested not only in downtown itself, but how our transit corridors and transit solutions feed into downtown.
Do you have any personal experience with the planning commission discretionary review process or building permit process in Menlo Park or another community?
As I said, I used to work as a city staff member for San Jose, so I engaged in decisions there, but I've never owned my own home. I've been a renter, so I don't have any personal experience in that way.
And what experience do you have working in a group setting and indicate what sort of framework was used to ensure efficient and effective meetings?
Yeah, so I would say both in my jobs in technology and also my jobs in city government, we, in a group setting, used, I think it'd be referred to as agile methodology, to help with planning. I think in a commission or city setting, it's important to understand how the rules of the meeting work so that you can move as efficiently as possible. And you know, having watched planning commission meetings, I've really appreciated when commissioners have both engaged with the material, but also realized that the role of the planning commission ultimately is to move those things forward that need to be moved forward, plans, environmental review, whatever it is. And so sometimes it's not always about getting the last word, it's about understanding the decision that needs to be made and efficiently moving in that direction, assuming that the needed questions have been raised.
And do you or your spouse have a business interest or other potential conflict of interest in the city?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. And then I know you touched upon state law, but I just wanted to ask you the same questions as everybody. What is your understanding of recent state housing laws and how they relate to local jurisdictions?
Yeah, so they're evolving quickly, but my understanding of the big ones is, first and foremost, the legislation surrounding, I don't know if mandating is the right word, but you know, mandating the amount of housing that each individual city needs to build in order to be in compliance and in order to help with statewide goals. So I think that's a big one. I also know that there's specific legislation to make it easier, more expedited, or for there to be fewer restrictions around building near transit, which I think is really important and a great step in the right direction. So I'm most familiar with those two pieces of legislation. I know there are also other ones as well.
So those are all of our prepared questions. I want to ask my colleagues if they have any follow-up questions. So Mr. Erich, are there any concluding thoughts or questions that you have for the council at this time?
No, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, so our next applicant will be Ross Silverstein. And I believe Ross is participating virtually. So I will promote you now, Ross. All right, so Ross, you should be able to engage your webcam and microphone at this time.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Silverstein.
Hello from Spain. It's three in the morning here.
Oh. Hi, thank you for joining us and for staying up for this. So I don't know if you've been watching or sleeping, but what we're doing is asking a series of questions. I will be asking all the questions. And then I'll invite my colleagues to ask any follow-up questions, and you'll have an opportunity at the end to say anything else that you want to let us know and to ask questions yourself. So we'll go ahead and get started. Please describe why you want to serve on the planning commission and what you hope to accomplish as a member.
In the most succinct way possible, I want to serve because I care about the future of Menlo Park. I have three young kids, I'm very excited for them to grow up in Menlo Park, but also strongly believe they should have the opportunity to grow in the best city they can. And if I have the opportunity to influence that in any way I can, then I want to. I would say a little more tactically. I think that this is right now a really exciting time to be part of city planning. Particularly, I think that the last interviewer mentioned a number of times around the state legislation that is coming down in terms of increasing density, increasing housing, and figuring out in what way we can do that in the right way for us and figure out how to navigate the next decade of Menlo Park growth, which I think is going to be really critical.
How do you intend to balance the interest of project applicants and other members of the community?
I'd say first and foremost is open and proactive communication. Making sure that anything that's going to affect a member of the community, they're aware of it ahead of time, and we properly you know, reach out and collect any feedback. And then also making sure that we have standardized frameworks that people can find relatively predictable so that the project applicants themselves don't feel like the planning commission or city council is fickle in the ways in which they make decisions, necessarily decisions themselves, but at least that framework. So that, you know, if the same thing comes to the planning commission twice, or at least substantially similar, that you would expect a similar result. And that way people can feel like they're properly being heard and the expectations across those different members of the community or at least stakeholders are properly set.
What major issues do you foresee the planning commission dealing with? And what would the commission's role be in dealing with these issues?
Lots of issues at the micro level. You know, clearly a lot of different projects then to be reviewed and approved or denied or amended. But at the macro level, it's mostly, there is a strong demand to live in Menlo Park, much more so than can currently be satisfied. That results in a housing price increases that we've seen over the last many years. And I think that overall encompasses a lot of the planning commission's issues. It is increasing big projects that we've seen in terms of companies wanting to be, and that's included in the demand, as well as smaller projects where individual homeowners are looking to either tear down and build a larger house or to add ADUs. And the planning commission really needs to have this broader perspective and view over that demand. And how do we really satisfy that? How do we make sure the people who, you know, aren't able to be in the room with us today right now because they don't live here yet, they're able to kind of properly be assumed as part of the community over the next many years and, you know, can we grow properly? And I guess without too much disruption.
What is your understanding of the downtown specific plan? And what are your ideas about how the implementation can be a success?
My understanding of downtown specific plan is a framework for improvements in the downtown area. Which parts of downtown should be used for what? And what the kind of specific improvements we can make in terms of those various corridors. In terms of how it can be a success, I'd say there are two factors that are critical. One is how people get downtown, and then two is what people do when they're there. In terms of transportation, I'm a very strong proponent of transportation that doesn't necessarily include single occupancy vehicles. To be much more inclusive to people who either don't have a car, can take the bus, are going to be biking, or really use any kind of other mode of transportation to get downtown. And then when they're there, making sure that it really is friendly for that pedestrian lifestyle. I was actually looking at was actually looking at the downtown plan recently, and I noticed that there are more parking, there's more square footage dedicated to parking lots than there is to open public space, and making sure that people who are walking around different shops, want to sit at a cafe, have the opportunity to do so. Like I mentioned, I'm here in Spain right now, and there are open plazas everywhere, and there are people everywhere, because when they do get downtown, they don't feel like they just need to kind of quickly get in their car and hop off. And so that is something I'm really excited about for for the future of Menlo Park is making sure that people feel comfortable out and about and with their community members.
Do you have any personal experience with the planning commission discretionary review process or building permit process in Menlo Park? Or another community, for that matter?
No, I don't. I've been a renter my whole life and haven't applied to any specific planning commission for improvements.
Okay, and what experience do you have working in a group setting and indicate what sort of framework was used to ensure efficient and effective meetings?
I have a ton of experience working in group settings. I've worked in tech my whole life. I've managed other people. I've worked in kind of large and small groups with people in person as well as remotely. It's a for we've used a variety of different frameworks, ones that I found successful in terms of efficient meetings. The first are agendas and proper expectations. What do you want to get out of the meeting? What is important? If nothing else happened, what are the two critical things that we need to walk away, either having decided, discussed, and kind of how do we determine what those future follow up action items should be on those critical pieces? And then it's a strong culture of respect and the ability to disagree. Meetings are really important when the members of those meetings are able to really voice their opinions. And the reason we have a whole committee is because people have different opinions. But if they're not able to, if they don't feel like they're able to properly convey what they feel, or are going to be concerned about other people disagreeing with them, then we have the wrong kind of psychology of the meeting overall, and making sure that people feel like they can totally disagree without any word feelings is very important to ensuring that the committees or groups that we're working with are able to actually take advantage of that diversity.
What is your understanding of the time commitment that is necessary in order to be well prepared for planning commission meetings?
Explicitly, I don't know what the time commitment necessary is. I guess I could tell you that I'm willing to meet it. But I don't know whether or not it would be a couple hours, two to three hours a week, or up to 10, in terms of how much work there would be on the planning commission. And I guess that would be a follow up question I have for the council, maybe after the standardized questions.
Okay. Do you or your spouse have a business interest or other potential conflict of interest in the city, other than potentially your personal residence? Okay. And the final question is, what is your understanding of recent state housing laws and how they relate to local jurisdictions?
I'd say I have a fairly fairly high understanding of those state housing laws, and those AV 2097, 2011, and then SB six that came down in the last, I guess it was last two years now. I don't work within planning professionally, but I follow this, I guess, as a hobby, and have tried to keep up with all of the various legislation that's happening at the state level. It trickles down to the city level. I'm very excited about that progress. I'd say particularly in terms of mixed use zoning, where the state is essentially able to free up some spaces that are currently underutilized in various cities and ensure that cities are using their their real estate in the most attractive way possible and not necessarily narrowly characterizing specific plot of land for
Ross, we're having a little difficulty catching all of your audio at this time. Ross, are you able to hear? Are you able to hear us? Ross?
You realize it's around state. Hear me? One second.
Okay.
Yes.
Your audio is kind of cutting in and out a little bit.
Okay, is this any better than it was before? Okay, great. Did you hear my response previously, or should I repeat that?
I'd recommend repeating.
The whole thing?
It was just the last, let me see. You follow it as a hobby. You're exciting to free up unutilized space.
Yeah, that's essentially what I ended on. Basically, I understand that there are some state bills that have passed that would not necessarily restrict commercial real estate specifically to that, and would allow for cities to be able to find better uses of either corridors or lots that are not currently being properly productively used, I guess. And I, I'm particularly excited about mixed use zoning in general, having your neighborhood store right next to where you live, or where you work, or your coffee shop and restaurants, having those be as close as possible, so you can just kind of walk around and feel like you're a member of the community is something that I particularly enjoy.
Thank you. I'd like to see if any of my colleagues have any follow up questions for you. I'm not seeing any. So Mr. Silverstein, are there any questions you have for us or final words you'd like to say?
There's one specific question about time commitment, which I don't know if someone wants to opine on, but I did have one specific question as well. I guess I'll leave the first one to you guys.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so the
That was your question.
Well, I'll do both, and then I'll give you guys an opportunity to respond, I guess. So my, the question that I had ahead of time is, I understand that decisions on the planning commission get made on a case by case basis, and it's possible that the planning commission and city council ends up kind of declining projects at the micro level on an individual project basis. And then maybe a year later or two years later, you look back and you realize that maybe we're not achieving the overall citywide goals that we want to achieve. How does either the planning commissioner, city council reconcile the differences maybe between what you want to achieve at the broad annual or kind of decade level in terms of growth and projects versus these these kind of one off decisions for any individual project?
That is a very big question. Do any of my colleagues, anyone biting at the chance, our former planning commissioner, Combs? Okay, so with regards to our city's goals, the general plan is kind of the bible, I guess, of the city. And we have obviously different zoning in the general plan that helps us determine what goes where, where commercial is, where residential is, what the different zoning districts are. And then with regards to specifically housing, there's the housing element, which is a chapter of the general plan, which is a state requirement to update every eight years. So those are kind of the guiding documents. Now, for the state, we have to submit what's called an APR, an annual progress report, to the state, letting them know how many units we are producing. So I think there's a distinction between kind of what the state requirements are versus maybe what kind of the community's hopes and dreams are for the for the development and the timing and how that's going to roll out in a beautiful way. I think it's not a perfect dance. And it's kind of a work in progress. And so I think, let me see, does anyone else want to try to address this? Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, you know, echoing what the mayor was saying, I would just add that, you know, the city isn't the sole stakeholder, like, right? When it comes to how development planning decisions then materialize and are implemented and become actual buildings, right? Are we, we can create an environment like through, through documents required by the state, through our own goals and plans, that would like to see certain change, like as it relates to housing stock specifically or development. But at the end of the day, a developer has to come to the table, right, and say that they want to, they want to develop land. So a property owner wants to develop land, or a developer wants to acquire land and, and develop it. And that's a key, you know, a key, you know, part that may not always allow us to fully realize what what we want to see all the time. But but we do have, again, certain levers. I think the, I think as one of the applicants mentioned, the SRI project provides a good example. And that, I think initially, the developers there and property owners were thinking of something in the neighborhood of like 500 units, or in its engagement with the planning commission and ultimately with council, that has led them to look at the possibility of more housing units. And so that's an individual project where then you do have to, you can exercise those levers, like once it's in process, to see what you want to see. Again, assuming what you want to see is more housing than that. But then, you know, there's no forcing mechanism on our end to say that, like, that SRI has to develop their property, or any, you know, the big five, Safeway. And so that ends up being a very important X factor when it comes to, you know, like, all of our planning documentation and all of our goals actually materializing. Hopefully, that that answered your question. And on the time commitment, it has been a while. I don't actually remember. But they meet every other other week, right? And
I would, I would say I've been tracking their meetings. They have been very long. I would say they're going like five hours, and they have packets that can be in the quadruple digits of, of environmental impact reports, fiscal impact analysis, site visits. And the meetings are now in person, and the rules around remote participation after the pandemic have kind of reverted a bit back to pre pandemic rules. There are some exceptions that have been made. So that's just a consideration, too. It's, it's, it's a heavy lift. Was there anything, any other question, or did anyone else want to add anything? Council, Councilmember Nash?
It is a heavy lift, and it's also a really exciting role in the community.
With, that goes without saying, of course. Okay, Mr. Silverstein, was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, nothing on my end. Sorry, I think my video cut out. But no, thank you.
Well, we will let you go back to sleep, and thank you very much for joining us internationally. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, so our final applicant of the evening of the evening will be Katie Farrick. Hi, Katie, right here. Yes, and Mike looks live, so you should be good to go. And I will turn again to the mayor to continue the interviews.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Farrick.
Good evening.
You have the advantage of probably knowing what the questions are before I ask them at this point. But in the sake of fairness, we're going to go through the same order of the same questions with everyone. So please describe why you want to serve on the planning commission and what you hope to accomplish as a member.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wilson and City Council. My name is Katie Farrick. I'm a former planning commissioner. I served on the commission from 2008 to 2016, and I learned a massive amount. It was a, it was, it is an exciting opportunity in the community to serve the community. I've since learned even more. I've been able to leverage the experience I learned serving this community in my next, you know, the subsequent career work that I had, I've done. And so I just would like to now give that back to the city and reengage in the city of Menlo Park, where I've now lived about 20 years, just having, you know, gained that, that additional information and insight, seen some progress in some exciting areas. It's nice to see people acknowledging the continued desire for vibrancy downtown, for example, with the specific plan that continues. But then other new things have emerged, such as a much more robust arena housing allocation that we need to meet. And so, you know, I just want to engage and help navigate through these additional complexities that we face as a city.
And how do you intend to balance the interests of project applicants and other members of the community?
I think it's just, it's really through being open and listening and understanding not only community members' points of view, but also applicants and understanding to the priorities of the city, an understanding of the general plan, zoning requirements, the SEQA analysis, all of the different kinds of inputs that come into trying to make a recommendation as an advisory body or a, or a decision makers. You know, you have to look at all the information and not only look at one point of view in order to make a balanced decision that is best for the entire community.
What major issues do you foresee the planning commission dealing with? And what would the commission's role be in dealing with these issues?
I think one is certainly front and center is the housing element update implementation. 2,946 units is not a small task for the size of our city. And I think there's been a lot of concern expressed when individual projects come to bear. And so trying to make sure that we can help steer meeting these housing goals in a way that's a win for the community and the neighborhoods that they will be part of. So I think that's going to be the biggest, the biggest challenge before us.
What is your understanding of the downtown specific plan? And what are your ideas about how the implementation can be a success?
Well, I was pleased to be part of the downtown specific plan creation from the design sessions that we would host in various parts of the city. And just to repeat, the, the continued desire for vibrancy downtown and the continued need for greater east west connectivity, I think are two vital elements. I also think the, the, the change in terms of the need for the amount of parking that we thought we might have needed 10 years ago could, could be evolved to meeting a more transit oriented and kind of environmentally friendly solution in order to then take advantage of further opportunities for smarter infill development to continue that vibrancy and, and meet our housing goals.
Do you have any personal experience with the planning commission discretionary review process or building permit process in Menlo Park or another community?
Yes, so I served on the planning commission for eight years. I also have had houses in our neighborhood that I've provided input on to the planning commission. And we have a residence in suburban park where we didn't need to get planning permission, planning commission approval, but we did go through a review process for that.
What experience do you have working in a group setting and indicate what sort of framework was used to ensure efficient and effective meetings?
Oh, well, the team I'm on at work now is certainly a group. And we've, it's a team that both operates offices as well as plans real estate strategy globally and, you know, meets the needs of the employees that come to work every day. But then looking beyond that, when I was part of the planning commission, working with fellow commissioners, but also understanding the priorities of council members, that was part of it. Prior to that, I think another group setting that was really kind of sticks in my mind was in the mid 2000s, there was a Your City, Your Decision, a budget advisory committee, where we had a, it was an ad hoc committee that the council created to basically have a citywide budget to basically have a citywide budget prioritization process that gathered input from as many people as we could gather input from. And working with that group was really an interesting learning experience because of the difference, the, the diversity of perspectives that that particular committee composition had. And I think that was a really great learning experience for all of us to, um, to be part of such a, a committee with such different and divergent opinions, but yet yield a very, um, I thought, robust result in a, in a prioritization that then, uh, you know, some of which was implemented in terms of city priorities and budgeting, um, over the following years.
What is your understanding, I think I gave this one away already, but what is your understanding of the time commitment that is necessary in order to be well-prepared for planning commission meetings?
Well, if it is like it was, it was a very substantial packet was delivered the Thursday night, Friday, uh, the, prior to the meeting Mondays. There would be, you know, reviewing the documents, but also site visits, possibly visiting, you know, meeting with applicants if, if that's something that, that is the, you know, a decision that you'd, one would want to make, um, as well as potentially, um, you know, the meeting, of course, but like, uh, doing some background research too. So if, for example, checking against the general plan, doing a little research, understanding how if the project or development is in a specific plan area or precise plan area, um, you know, diving into that plan document, um, you know, there, there could be, you could spend a lot of time, but it's, uh, it can be pretty extensive. If it's a relatively straightforward meeting, a light week, it might be just two to three hours.
Um, do you or your spouse have a business interest or other potential conflict of interest in the city other than your personal residence?
No.
And finally, what is your understanding of recent state housing laws and how they relate to local jurisdictions?
Well, we've all been required to do the housing element update this year. I was part of the, uh, I was the planning commission appointee to the last housing element update, the 2015 to 2023. And then there was one, um, just a couple of years prior to that, because we had a little bit of a compression, um, to fit a couple in that we were behind on at that timeframe. And so it's a, it's, it's an update of that element of the general plan. Um, we're allocated a number and we need to identify, uh, where in the city would be the best opportunity areas to accommodate the housing allocation that we need to zone for. Um, and so that was recently submitted. And from what I read, there's, uh, you know, twenty four hundred and sixteen nine or something like that, twenty nine forty-six. I'm sure I got that wrong. But anyway, quite a number that, um, that we're going to need to really be thoughtful as a community to find, uh, room for, uh, housing at all income levels.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ferick. Um, I'll now, uh, turn it over if my colleagues have any follow-up questions. Um, uh, do you have any questions for us or final words you'd like to share?
No, I just, I'm, I'm excited for the prospect of possibly, uh, you know, serving on the commission and, and being able to really, uh, leverage the knowledge I've gained from various, um, nonprofit boards and my work over the last several years to bring to bear to help the community move forward in a way that is really, uh, positive for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferick. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, so that does conclude our planning commission interviews. So Mayor Wilson, you may continue on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. So as a reminder to those members of the public and to our applicants, the council will not be taking action this evening on making a selection. We will be appointing members to the planning commission and our other commissions, which we don't hold interviews for on, uh, April 25th. So that's right around the corner. So for those of you, um, who were intrigued by the interviews and want to see where it goes, tune in next week, um, for part two. Um, we are now moving on to D, closed session. Uh, City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on closed session items? And as a reminder, after we hear the closed session public comments, we will not be discussing anything here in chambers. We will, um, adjourn to closed session privately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item D1, conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, D2, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, or item D3, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Um, Mayor Wilson, at this time, we're seeing approximately 10 speakers.
Okay, we can move forward. Um, has, has everyone who wishes to speak either raised their hand or, um, uh, so why don't we do two minutes actually per public comment, um, to, uh, to keep the meeting moving? So are we typically, depending on how many public speakers we have, anyway, two minutes for each commenter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So our first speaker is on item D1 and it's Richard Heinz.
Hello, uh, thank you for, uh, having public comment on this matter. Uh, I know the Coons family there on the bit closer. Is that better? Uh, I live on Oak Court in Menlo Park. I've lived there for 23 years. The Coons live on O'Connor, which is one street over from us. I'm mainly here for their dog, actually, who, uh, I've come to know really well. It's probably the nicest dog I've ever met. Um, really kind, uh, gentle dog. And, uh, I just wanted to share that I, it's just such an unfortunate incident. And I'm sorry that it's gotten escalated to the point that it is now. And I, I hope that the city attorney will take a look at it as a human problem as opposed to a legal matter. Um, this dog to me is the friendliest dog I've ever met. Uh, I don't understand how it's gotten to this level where it's been, uh, kind of arbitrarily made into a dangerous animal. But I would urge the city attorney and the city council to look at it as a human problem and also to understand that it's very difficult to deal with the animal control people at San Mateo. Um, I think it's been outsourced, so I, I feel like it's not even really part of the government. And, um, my own experience with that has been very difficult. So, um, I just want to support them in this, uh, matter and urge you to look at it as a human matter and, and look at the dog as well, because I don't think you've ever even met the dog before. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Stacy Dex, followed by Jenna McGrath.
Hi, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Tobias and Liliana and their sweet adorable dog Bear. Uh, he's a classic, good-natured golden retriever. I've seen him in many settings, all over the neighborhood, walking around, milling around with people and interacting. He's obedient. He sits on command. He hangs out while we talk with Tobias or Liliana. The more I've learned about this situation, the more I realize that the false set of facts that were presented, uh, since day one are very, uh, have, have kind of grown out of control. Uh, how this has escalated and landed in your laps is really a travesty. And the punishment that the humane society, uh, has put down is because, uh, they've taken the testimony of one party. Uh, the precedent that anyone's dog can be labeled dangerous if one neighbor is set on creating a world of hurt is pretty frightening. The fact that Cleo, a Malamute on Walnut and Central killed a cat, killed a dog, and almost killed another dog, just goes to show how arbitrary and capricious animal control is. Bear is not your example to set a precedent. It's outrageous and over the top to support the humane society's arbitrary findings is wrong. Um, the complaint by one party does not and should not lead to official action. In the absence of a large amount of complaints, this case should be dismissed. Please don't enforce this drastic penalty on Bear and his family. Um, when there is no reliable evidence that this golden retriever is anything but a beautiful golden retriever who is calm, loving and fun. And some may argue, me being one, the darn cutest dog you've ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So next up is Jenna McGrath, followed by Scott Stalker.
Hi, thank you. So I'm also here to speak on behalf of Bear, who is honestly one of the most beautiful and sweet dogs I've ever met. I've lived in the neighborhood for just over a year and a half now. And one of the first neighbors that my husband and I met when we were out walking our own dog was Tobias and Bear. And ever since then, we always stop and visit with them. We see Bear and Tobias or Liliana and Tobias and Bear socializing with other neighbors, other dogs all the time. And it's one of the few dogs that our dog actually really likes because she's very shy. Uh, when I saw Tobias on a walk a couple of months ago and he told me everything that was going on, I was truly shocked because Bear is seriously such a sweet and kind dog. Uh, as Tobias told me all this, Bear had his head resting on my knee and then was belly up, just asking for scratches and pets. He's really, really sweet. I've never seen her interacted with the other dog that's a part of this matter. And I think that's actually pretty telling because I walk and I run and I drive up and down that street every day, if not multiple times a day. After learning what Tobias and Liliana have been put through, my husband and I are pretty wary now when we walk near that house because we wouldn't want an incident like this to happen to our sweet dog and have it be blown out of proportion that it escalates to this matter. While I am glad that a report can be taken seriously, I think that after all of this time and energy and effort that has gone into this case, it should be pretty clear that one single witness's account is not actually accurate in this instance and that this wasn't an attack on children. It wasn't a mauling. It was just a fairly normal interaction between dogs that's been blown out of proportion. I think the humane society would be setting a dangerous precedent for the neighborhood and the community if this case, uh, is favored with one witness over another. Um, because again, this dog is really sweet and there's lots of sweet dogs in the neighborhood. And I worry what would happen for everyone else. Tobias, Liliana and Bear are valued members of our neighborhood and dog friends to us. And I'm glad to be here speaking on their behalf. Thanks.
Thank you, Jenna. Next speaker is Scott Stalker, followed by Scout Tweedy Yates.
Hi, um, my name's Scott Stalker. Thanks for letting me, um, speak to you on, with my concern about the decisions before you tonight. Um, I live, I also live on O'Connor Street and I've been there for 16 years. And I've known Toby and Liliana and Bear since he was a puppy. Um, and I've, wouldn't, just as everyone else has said, I witnessed him interacting with other dogs in our Willow's Dog Park and on dog walks hundreds of times. Um, I've never once seen any aggressive behavior or anything close to being dangerous. He's just a very sweet, lovable golden retriever. Um, and a point, um, I'd like to emphasize is, um, Toby and Liliana have been very responsible dog owners for as long as I've known them. They invested in training Bear when he was young. I've watched how often Toby is training him to respond to commands. Um, he's always welcome in the dog park. We have a very close, um, that community of dog owners that use the Willow's Dog Park. And, um, just as the previous person said, um, I've never encountered that other dog owner. And I think, I do think that's pretty telling, um, how beloved Bear is in the neighborhood. Um, and none of us really knew this other dog. I also just wanted to say that, um, Toby and Liliana were acted responsibly after this by paying the vet bill and doing everything that you should do if your dog gets into a altercation with another dog. That doesn't always happen. Um, and finally, I, I also worry about the precedent this sets that if a dog like Bear can be deemed a dangerous animal, it makes Menlo Park a very unwelcome place where all of us are going to live in fear of taking our dogs to the dog park if there's an altercation, um, with someone who really wants to press for whatever reason, um, you know, a, an issue like this. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Scout Tweedy Yates, followed by Candace Hathaway.
Hello, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Scout Tweedy Yates. I'm here to speak about Bear and his loving family, the Coonses. I'd like to express my concern about the labeling of him as a dangerous dog. As a dog owner and someone who lives and works in this community, I feel that it's important to speak up for what is right and what affects all dog owners in this city. I've had the pleasure of knowing Bear for many years and I can attest to his good and friendly nature. I've witnessed his interactions with other dogs and people countless times. And I've never, ever seen him display any signs of aggression or violent behavior. If you've met Bear, you'd understand that this is not a dog with behavior issues. Everything this incident screams, everything about it screams normal dog interaction in a public place. In fact, I'm a dog owner myself and other dogs have scrambled with my own intact dog, leaving similar minor injuries. Why have I not pressed charges for these almost identical occurrences? Because this is what dogs do. Every day in parks, streets and countless other cities all around the world, yes, this was an unfortunate accident, but something that had very little consequence and something that could have happened to anyone with a canine. The idea that Bear could be designated as a dangerous dog based on this incident is a complete overreaction. The Coonses are completely responsible dog owners and upstanding members of the, the community. This sets a dangerous precedent that anyone's dog could be labeled dangerous at any time for essentially no reason. And that individuals can use this to perpetuate neighborhood vendettas. Dogs are individuals with their own personalities and quirks. And when circumstances are right, they can act out of character. You'll know this if you lived in this city around the Fourth of July holiday. Fireworks are just one of many potential, potential stressors that can affect your pet's homeostasis. It's unfair to judge an animal for the rest of its life based, based on such an isolated incident with so little harm done. Anyways, uh, Bear's not dangerous in any meaning of the word and it'd be a travesty to treat him as such and keep him away from the community you grew up within. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Candace Hathaway, followed by Steve Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and Council. Um, I'm Candace Hathaway. I live in the Willow's. I've lived there for 40 years. I've also been a dog owner for 60 years and a public mediator for 25 years. And I'm here for all three of those reasons. Um, I'm not really here about Bear. I don't need to be. There've been many testimonies about his character and stability, including a letter I wrote earlier. Um, and I think someone mentioned earlier, this, this looks more like a neighbor issue than a dog issue. And I would concur with that. Um, so I'm concerned as a dog owner that this could happen to me and about half of my neighborhood. But also as a resident of Menlo Park, I have a concern about how the city manages disputes between neighbors, which is what this is. When I was working in other cities, with other cities as a mediator, I really saw the difference it made when a city had in place policies, procedures, expectations, interactions that supported resolution of disputes rather than escalation and punishment. I hope you've looked at the video of the arbitration, um, and you will ask yourself if that was indeed a fair and just hearing of all the, um, all the parties involved. Um, and was the decision actually based on information from, um, from expert testimony? Your second question to your planning commissioners, I thought was really interesting. How do you intend to balance the interests and, uh, of applicants and other members of the community? I ask you the same question. How is the city, do you intend to balance the interests of disputing residents and support resolution rather than escalation? One builds community and the other completely destroys it.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Steve Schmidt, followed by Kathleen Holick.
Good evening, Council. Um, my wife and I, Riel Johnk, and, uh, and I, about a year ago, decided to retire from being involved in city business. As you know, I was on the As you know, I was on the council for eight years, ending in, uh, my retirement in twenty twenty two. But I couldn't resist this one. When I was on the council, I, I tried and succeeded in avoiding getting involved in disputes between neighbors. There are bigger issues, uh, for you to deal with. There were then, there are now. And the fact that the city is spending public money on a dispute like this is ridiculous. So my, my advice to you in dealing with, um, this matter is to take it back from the county and then drop it. It's not a good use of public money when you've got so many other issues. You've got some big legal issues, uh, on your plate. And my advice to you would be to just make this go away. It's, it's a non-issue. And I would also, uh, if I were you, pay attention to what Candace Hathaway just said about developing a mechanism for mediating neighbor to neighbor disputes. I think that'd be a great way to, uh, put a cap on this, uh, on this problem. It's not really a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So our next speaker is Kathleen Hoak, followed by Deborah Denne.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Ho-Halek. I live on Woodland Avenue and I probably walk about three hundred and forty five days a year and usually with a dog. At one time, many years with a little teeny Yorkie who encountered Bear. And my Yorkie was terrified of dogs. Now Bear, Bear was so calm and so gentle. My little dog would just stand there and go, okay, okay. And then I've seen Bear with big dogs. I've seen him play free in a yard about an acre size and run with a very young, very, very active and wildly playful German Shepherd. And it's nothing but peace, running, peace and love. And every time I see Bear, he is on a leash, he is interchanging with other dogs, other neighbors, and it's every day almost that I see these people. So I can't believe that this dog is, is something other than what I've seen so many dozens of times. And I've never seen this other dog ever, and I walk the streets every day almost. There's probably twenty five days a year I don't walk. So I would like to say that I think something's gotten out of whack here. If you're listening to somebody saying this is a vicious dog. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Deborah Denny, followed by Preeti Sharma.
I'm not sure if this is allowed, but Deborah asked me to represent her for her statement.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll keep it short. Uh, my name is Deborah Denny. I'm the owner of Dilly, a three-year-old Welsh Corgi. We've been friends with Tobias and Bear for close to three years now. Bear is one of the sweetest dogs we've come across. During the early days of COVID, a group of dog owners and our dogs went to the park every afternoon. It was our social outlet. We could be outside, distanced from each other and our dogs could play. Tobias and Bear were part of that group. One afternoon, friends of mine were there with their new puppy and a trainer. The trainer was helping the owners acclimate their puppy into the park and learn how to interact with other dogs. As we were watching the other dogs, the trainer was commenting on their behavior. When Tobias and Bear showed up, trainer observed Bear and said, now there's a dog who's calm and composed. He knows his element. The other dogs are comfortable around him. The trainer singled out Bear as being the dog with good natural behavior. I'm dismayed that the city of Menlo Park is going to such lengths to have Bear permanently labeled as dangerous animal. Nothing could be further from the truth. Bear is gentle, loving, and I trust him with my grandchildren. If Bear is considered dangerous, then by the city's standards, almost all the other dogs in our community are as well. Bear is the kind of well behaved dog that we as dog owners can only hope our pets can be. Please do the right thing and give Bear back his freedom. Deborah. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So our next speaker will be Preeti Sharma, followed by Nancy Tompkins. And this will also be the final call for public comment on our closed session items, D one through D three. And Preeti, if you can let me know which item you are speaking on.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Honorable council members, I'm here again speaking on the animal control issue and the last time I spoke with you on this was, uh, during the unfortunate incident when Sparky was viciously attacked. I, I think I would like to underscore, um, what I brought, uh, forth during that time and what is also coming forth right now during Bear's issue is that the fact that Menlo Park citizens are not really getting an independent hearing. So the hearing officer tends to always agree with whatever the animal control comes to a decision with. So there's almost never been a case, and this I was told by animal control themselves, that that, there's almost never been a case where the hearing officer disagrees with the animal control's initial decision, and this is a huge problem. So we need to get stats from animal control on how many hearings do they actually rule against the animal, the animal control's independent, in initial decision. So it is my contention and I would strongly contend that we really are not getting an independent hearing. And as to the issue of Bear, um, I have met him a few times. I've seen him around other animals. He is pretty nonchalant, uh, around small and large dogs. So, um, that is my experience with him. The other thing is in case of Cleo, what I cannot reconcile is in case of Cleo, who was not living with his owners, was pretty irredeemable. The, uh, the hearing officer ignored the three cases, the hearing of the other owner whose dog was killed as well, whose cat was killed. He ignored everything and gave him a clean shit. While, uh, while as Bear gets this dangerous hearing, I'm not able to reconcile. And the only, the only thing that makes, this makes sense is what we are not getting is an independent hearing. So please look into this. Um, Bear has so many testimonies. Please take that into account and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our final speaker will be Nancy Tompkins. And Nancy, I'll ask if you can let us know which item you are speaking on.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm talking about Bear.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? So to start, I'm sorry I could not attend in person, but I'm on deadline for a work project. But I am very concerned about the decision you will make tonight and my hope is that you will drop the dangerous dog designation for Bear and his family. And not just for them, it would set a ridiculous president, precedent for all the dog owners in our neighborhood. If this could happen to Bear, who's a great dog, it could happen to anyone. I live kitty corner from the Husky owners on Central Avenue. I don't know their dog and rarely see them walking him, but I do know Bear. I met him when I was out walking my golden retriever Tucker several years ago. My Tucker has had playdates with Bear at, at my house and at Tobias and Liliana's home. I've seen Bear interact with their three kids and neighbors. He is just the sweetest dog ever. And I've had long conversations with Tobias and Liliana about training, the best dog food, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, all I can say is they are totally into this. They have their human kids and their canine kid. And just to mention, I attended the Zoom call in November and I thought it was clear that this was just an unfortunate incident between two dogs, not an attack. And I don't even understand why animal control was called in the first place. I understand it might be scary for those involved, but this kind of squabble does happen quite often in dog parks. So are we going to classify all the dogs that growl and play too hard with other dogs as dangerous dogs? And also, why does one neighbor get to do this to Bear? And what I really don't understand is that animal control had thirty plus letters, including a letter from me from neighbors who knew Bear and Tobias and Liliana, and these are dog owners in our neighborhood that talked honestly about what a nice gentle dog Bear is. I mean, think about it, just about everybody knows Bear in our neighborhood. Would we all be interacting with a dangerous dog? And we all know what great dog, dog parents they are. Those testimonials should make a difference. So I, and kind of to end, I just think this whole thing was such an overreaction. Bear is in no way a dangerous dog. And I think we have more important things to worry about in our neighborhood. Let's not let one small incident ruin our dog friendly community.
Thank you for your comment. Um, Mayor Wallison, seeing no further cards or hands. You may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to everyone who came out this evening to give testimony. So what we are doing now is the city council will be adjourning the special meeting and reconvening in closed session. The closed session report out, if any, will occur at the April twenty fifth city council meeting. So there will be no further, um, appearance of the city council this evening. So at this time, I will be adjourning to closed session. It's seven twenty six. Thank you.